Guys, welcome to Real Talk. Thank you for joining us Friday morning. It's good to be with you on the I Love Seaville Network. This is the insider's guide to real estate across Charlottesville, Alamo County in central Virginia. It's powered by the Yes Team. We're gonna have a good time. It's a lot we have on our plate. I'll tell you what, Michael Payne in the house. We're excited to have Michael Payne in the house. He is a candidate in Charlottesville City Council. Primary. He's a guest that this gentleman booked. Let's go to the two shots.
Good morning.
How are you? Good morning.
Doing great, my friend. You know, doing better than I deserve.
Can you talk to us about Michael Payne?
So, I'm excited, as I said before we went live with the cameras, to sit across the table from a rock star that gets housing. I hope I can keep up. I'm telling you to be an expert, but I think I'll get past the game today. And I'm just excited about the opportunity for him to share his thoughts. And you've said this numerous times on the show, so it's three guys at a bar. I prefer the bars to walk.
Me too.
Just chatting about stuff.
I love it.
I'm excited about the opportunity.
Welcome to the show, Michael. How's everything going in your life, sir?
Good. Busy, but enjoying it and glad to be here.
Well, one reason I'm excited about this opportunity is Michael has expressed great interest in what we're doing with the land trust. And I'm looking forward to opportunities to give some information out to the public, share with the candidates on what they know or don't know, or whatever answer they ask about the land trust. So my wife and I went on our walk this morning, and there's two things actually creeped into me. One, don't screw it up, the first thing. The second thing is stay away from acting like us in this world. There are a lot of hot crones around, so please bear with us on that. And, you know, and the third thing was, you know, try to be a little bit more approachable on the subject. Now, this is a high-level subject, but, you know, my wife is also a real estate agent, she's ex, and so. So how do you explain this model to a normal, I'm not gonna say normal person, but somebody who's an expert like Michael is? And the best way to explain that is, in my opinion, is it's kind of like a condo environment, right? Ownership where the land trust owns the land and the buyer owns the structure that's above it. And I think when I explain that, most people understand how the environment looks like, the structure looks like. So I think I'd like to throw it at Michael real quick and see what questions I can answer and see if he can begin our family.
Uh, let's talk about the project. Okay, let's make a question first and then we'll get to specifics.
Well, I think it's a really exciting project and again, a really exciting model. You know, when I try to try and talk to people about it, I like to talk about what the outcome of the community land trust is. And I think it's really about neighborhoods having more control over development in their community. It's about opening up homeownership opportunities to people who otherwise only afford to rent. And it's about permanent affordability, which are all really needed, especially in Charlottesville. Allotting housing models can't accomplish those things. And so I'm hoping, you know, I'm curious about some of the background of the project in terms of how it came together, where the land trust, land trust as an institution is at, what do you see as some of your mid and long-range goals? As well as, you know, what have been some of the challenges of getting to this point of being able to put together a project as innovative as what's happening on Nassau Street? Because I can, I can only imagine trying to do something totally new like this has a lot of hurdles and startup costs.
So how long do we have? We have plenty of time.
So I think I'll unpack that a little bit and unpack it how I got involved in it. So this was in 2016. I was in the Charlottesville Leadership Class. And so the land trust was the nonprofit that was, we helped. For those who are not familiar with Leadership Charlottesville, I would suggest that you Google it, but it's a really great organization put on by the Chamber of Commerce. We learn about the inner workings of Charlottesville and how best to help. But in any event, so what happened was is I was asked to come in it. We looked at the land trust. Land trust has been around for a while. It started pre, I don't call it recession. I call it a real estate depression. But let's call it a recession. Not much was going on with it, so we helped restructure it, reorganize it, gave it a little bit of focus. And we were able to acquire or convince a local property owner to sell their land substantially below market value. And then what I did is I went to the city council and petitioned for them to give us $240,000 or grant us $240,000 to acquire it and do the horizontal, the development work on it. And then what we did is we, so, so I kind of referred to this as a healthy housing system. I don't like the, that's not I don't like, but I think affordable housing has many meanings to different folks. So that's why I like a healthy housing system. But what, what we were able to do is pretty much what the Regional Housing Partnership is about, is create these four pillars of housing, right? Which in my opinion is local government, nonprofits, for-profits. And then, in my opinion, the most important pillar that sometimes gets missed in the discussion, who we serve.
Right.
The buyer, the renter on that. We tend as technical, technocrats start getting into these conversations, but we never really bring along the buyer or the tenant along with that. So that's why the land trust personally excites me so much is because it, the model of it, the model of it is on our board, we have folks like myself. But one of the requirements is you have to have landowners or actual, they call them lessors, on our board. And every time we have a board meeting, when you sit down and have a conversation with these folks that are actually living in our homes, it's amazing what I learn. And you think you know what you're talking about, and then all of a sudden they come out to you and you went, whoa, I really don't know what I'm talking about. So that's usually how it works. And, you know, one of my passions about it, Michael, is it's the first of advised neighborhoods. And, you know, we've created this system of lenders, private folks. We have UVA in the mix. And our biggest issue frankly is product, land to put more houses on. We, just to jump around a little bit, we put them on the market. We've got two contracts that went through. Really excited about it. They're, I think they're boot knees or, but they're immigrants, which makes it even more exciting for me, as my wife is an immigrant. So I hope I'm not babbling too much.
No, no. I think it's interesting. I'm gonna get you in the mix here. We have a lot of folks watching. Nicole Scro's watching.
Hey Nicole.
Ray Cadell's watching. We have Christine, Christine Bost Jacobs. She's watching, guys, from, what is it, the Thomas Jefferson Planning?
So Christine is our executive director.
Yeah, Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission Executive Director. She's a housing coordinator at the TJ PDC and also the executive director of Thomas Jefferson Community Land Trust. A lot of folks watching in City Hall. You have some folks that are running against you that are watching right now. I'm gonna get out of the way. One side, your side. He's got boots on the streets listening to people. You got boots on the street listening to people. Jump in here.
Well, in talking to people, again, I think a lot of people I talk to are excited about the community land trust model because you look at the housing needs assessment showing, you know, the need we have in Charlottesville in terms of almost 4,000 affordable interventions being needed. And, you know, that's gonna require big picture change and doing things differently. And the community land trust model, I feel like, you know, moves in that direction of really taking an innovative approach and doing something differently. And, you know, when I, when I hear community land trusts, you know, I think, I think big picture, long-term, I mean, looking at communities like Burlington, Vermont, which has a land trust, which has over 2,000 household members, a mix of housing types of apartments, single-family homes, seeing what's happening in Richmond with their community land trust. I think there's a land trust starting up in the Virginia Beach area, seeing the success they're starting to have in cities like Jackson, Mississippi, or Oakland in terms of really becoming a core part of the strategy that communities are using to help fight displacement and ensure long-term affordability. And I just see how much potential there is in something that's just starting and just coming together. And yeah, so, you know.
I told you he was a rock star.
Smart guy. Let me throw this out there. 10, what is it, and Michael, you know this, 10.27 square miles, the city of Charlottesville. Not much land, not much developed land left. With the land trust that's banking the land potentially in perpetuity, I see a lot of potential there because of the lack of supply that's available. That's the layman's perspective here. Put that topic on the table.
So I think what excites me most about the land trust is it's a permanent affordability. So one might say a 90-year lease is not permanent, but.
It's a long time.
I won't be around 90 years from now.
It's generational. We're not gonna be around 90 years from now.
Correct.
What happens after 90 years?
Pardon?
What happens after 90 years?
After 90 years.
Yeah, what happens after that?
You'd have to ask me the hard question.
Okay.
The one I don't, I don't know. Maybe Christine can chime in, because she's the genius on, on, I don't have an answer for it.
Christine, give us that answer. She's watching right now. What happens after 90 years with the land? Dick Kelly says, way to go Keith.
Well, I know, I don't know the case here locally, but I know there's at least some land trusts where their model is it's an automatically renewable lease. So unless, you know, new circumstances arise, it's sort of just still continuing that, that model. And again, looking at the communities which have had land trusts really gets, take off and have a lot of properties in their portfolio, is people really start to see it as a tool for preserving affordability in their neighborhood and opening up homeownership and equity opportunities to more people in their neighborhood. And you start to see people associate the land trust as like a, almost a brand that they know of and trust. And I know in Oakland, there's recent cases of people who've sold properties they own for below market rate to the land trust or willed properties because they really view it as a way of giving back to the community. And again, giving back long-term. You think about, you know, there's a lot of units in Charlottesville that are being kept below market rate because you have, you know, long-time landlords who know their tenants and they just want to have those properties be accessible to working families. But there's no guarantee that long-term, if they sell their properties or something that should happen, should happen, that that couldn't change. And again, the land trust is a tool for just helping to, to have those properties stay affordable and accessible in our housing portfolio in Charlottesville. And just being able to build that momentum, I think, is really exciting.
Christine offered an answer.
Good.
And then throw it to you. Christine says, it is, you were on point. It is a renewable lease. If they sell, the new buyer signs a new 90-year lease. Christine Bost Jacobs, gracias muchas.
And, and, you know, I've been trying to get her to sit across the table from me so she can answer, but she doesn't want to do it for whatever reason.
You're welcome. Anytime.
There you go.
Anytime. Jump in here, Keith.
Yeah, so I thought that was the answer, but I didn't want to say it and be wrong. So, you know, the other thing that the land trust does is the permanent affordability, but it also creates wealth, right? So the two property owners that were about ready to write a contract and they, we've got pre-approval from the lenders that we're working with and, and, you know, a shout out to our team members at Fulton PHA. You know, they've really helped us navigate these buyers through that. But, you know, typically, they don't have cash to put down, right? So we're working through PHA and the city has some available, funds available that we're gonna do it. But when they go to sell their home, say nine years or 10 years from now, they're gonna get to capture some of their, some of the equity and some of the, and all the appreciation, right? And so one of the confusing things about, folks are confused about is how does that process work?
Yeah, you're gonna tell us the metrics? This is important.
Yeah, at a high level.
Okay.
So, you know, the appreciation and equity, it's related to real estate. They're two different paths. You know, equity is, if these units sell for 215, let's say 10 years from now, they sell for 315, but they paid off $100,000 of their mortgage, right? So they get to keep 100% of that 100,000, right? So let's say they're, the 80% AMI, 10 years from now, the number's 315. I don't know what it's going to be. I'm just making an assumption here.
Sure.
But if they pay down their mortgage and there's, instead of a 215 mortgage, it's a 115 mortgage, they keep 100% of that. And Christine, if I'm going off, off here, she'll chime in and correct me on it.
I'm with you. He's with you.
Yep. So the equity, on the other hand, is that $100,000 delta, right? Between what, what, what it increased from 215 to 315. So under our model, they get to keep 25% of that. So here's a couple of folks that are gonna be putting contracts in on two units. They're basically moving into a home that has a value probably $100,000 as we sit now, higher than what it is now. They're gonna have solar, right? They're built with high-quality features. And basically in 10 years, assuming my math works, they can walk up with $125,000 worth of equity or cash. And then they can move into something else, move up this ladder of affordability, right? That Habitat and Dan speaks a lot of, which is.
Dan Rosenzweig.
Yeah, which is a great analogy on how this, in my opinion, this process works. So I, it's a little moving parts on it, but the reality of it is, at some point in time, they're going to be able to walk out with cash.
Right.
And then move up that ladder.
I'm gonna throw this to him. I'll get out of your way. That makes perfect sense. So basically, in a nutshell, here's the Cliff Notes version. Purchase price 215, 215,000. Let's say it appreciates in value to 315,000. That's a $100,000 delta. That means the buyer keeps 25,000 or 25% of that appreciation. Let's say they paid off 100 grand on their mortgage. They keep that entire 100K in equity. So then they walk with $125,000 that they can then essentially play Monopoly with or the housing game and potentially purchase a second piece of property, which would build a generational wealth, a chance for generational wealth for this family, thanks to this Nassau project. Christine Bost Jacobs says homeowners capture all of their earned equity and a portion of the market appreciation, which is 25%. Michael Payne, thoughts on this in general, on how it can really impact some of our impoverished citizens? In a lot of ways, I know this is cliche, building the American dream. What are your thoughts?
Oh, were you gonna say something?
No, I was just gonna echo. This is exactly what my wife said, that I, that you just boiled it down to something that I was a little long.
Put it in a sense.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I learned it from you.
Yeah, well, I'm a little long-winded.
What do you think, Michael?
Well, I think that, again, that speaks to the power of the model and, and I, you know, I like to think of it in terms of we're opening up opportunities to build generational wealth to people who would otherwise only be renting. And you're opening up that opportunity to build equity to more people in the community. And you're also able to, on a piece of land or a home owned by the community land trust, say in the lease that this property is for families at 80% of area median income or below. So when that family sells their home and gets that equity from it that they've built up, which they would otherwise have zero wealth, because they would have otherwise only been able to afford to rent, they're also able to then have that property go to another family who is in the same economic situation they were in before.
You love that aspect.
And pass that. Well, I think that's a huge benefit of the model because a lot of affordable housing models are either rentals where you're not building wealth, which again, is extremely valuable and part of the solution. But you're renting and not building wealth, or some models where you might be building wealth, you sell it. It can be sold and become market rate.
Right, after X amount of years.
And so over time, you're not, you're not creating, you're not passing down that opportunity across generations to as many families as possible. And that, I think, is just, it's really exciting and innovative. And you look at things in both Charlottesville and the United States more broadly of the racial wealth gap in the United States. And a lot of what we see in terms of economic inequality, a lot of that is rooted in the, in the fact that historically, working families, particularly working-class African-American families, didn't have access to homeownership opportunities to build generational wealth. And this is a model that breaks that history and is opening up wealth building to more people.
Love that answer. Let me throw it to you. We got a lot of people watching.
We got an opening on the board.
Yeah. John Kerber, Dominion Custom Homes, watching right now. Hello, John. Charlotte Renee Woods from Charlottesville Tomorrow is watching right now. We got folks watching at the Daily Progress, watching right now.
So the term I like to use, we are not one-deep, right? So some other models are one-deep, right? It stays affordable for a very narrow period of time and/or one owner. The, the beauty of this model is it just continually grows this, in my opinion, this healthy housing system. So I'm excited about it. I'd be a little remiss at not, as a board member, not to take the opportunity with some folks reading, you know, we've created this great system. It's firing on all 12 cylinders. But what we lack, like any other organization.
Is more land and money.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, so.
More land and money. As the businessman.
So I'm gonna leave and let you guys just finish this.
The businessman and the entrepreneur would throw this to you, and I have thrown this to you.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so the land has ridiculous value.
Yeah.
Especially in the city of Charlottesville. On top of that, the land also has four properties that are generating income and preserving and increasing the value of the land on Nassau Street.
Correct.
Why not, I'm gonna throw this to you. You know where I'm going. Why not leverage?
I have to go. I gotta.
This is the tough one, Keith Smith. Why not leverage?
I got too many people watching.
You have a ton of freaking people watching. Why not leverage the land as in, as a point to get more capital to do this again and again and again?
So how about them Mets?
Keith Smith, come on now. I guess it depends on who answers that question. It's pretty much what you're saying.
Yeah, so look.
Because you're aggressive.
Yeah, so in all fairness, I have other board members and chairman. So my personal opinion is my personal opinion. I do not want to be speaking for the full organization.
Sure.
You're 100% right. I'm a, I'm a recovering developer and builder, right? I, you know, I would start leveraging this stuff like crazy to generate more things. Here's the downside to leveraging it, right? You gotta make payments.
Sure.
And you gotta pay it.
Yeah.
So the problem with that is the math might not work, right? You might be able to acquire and say, hey, great, we're gonna leverage this and put a half a million dollars of capital or a million dollars worth of capital and then go out and buy a lot for 150,000. Well, now I'm paying interest on 150,000. And what happens is it now becomes not affordable. That 215.
Yeah, you have to raise the price point.
Is now 315 or 3, whatever that number may be. I, I will, I'd like to pivot a little bit. What I feel is a better approach or a better model is, so Maggie Walker Land Trust in Richmond, they have now just became the, I guess the executor would be the best choice of words for the Richmond Land Bank. Very different market, very different set of circumstances than we are. You know, I think as we sit here now, they have 7,000 properties that are delinquent in taxes, right? 2,000 of them are over five years that are literally abandoned.
Right.
Right? So what they do is they take them through their means and then they give them to the land trust. We're not, we don't have that circumstance here.
We're the opposite.
With one big exception.
Yeah, what's the big exception? I'm curious.
The landmark.
Yeah, true. The Landmark Hotel. Now the Laramore.
The Laramore.
Is that what we're calling it now?
Yeah, he's rebranding it after what? One of the first architects in the city of Charlottesville? You know, the Laramore.
We're looking at each other going, should we really go?
I gotta give him, he's not tax delinquent.
Yeah, he's not tax delinquent, but, okay, that's fair.
Well, that's the only way that they could.
Right.
That, yeah.
He's generating about 65,000 a year for the city on his taxes on his skeleton, but he's screwing the downtown mall. I'm gonna get a guy to get out of the way. Throw it back to you.
Yeah, well, we're gonna not talk about that.
No, no, we're not gonna talk about that, because we're very passionate about that.
We're very passionate about that. So, but.
Greg Slater watching right now.
Hey Greg, that's my chairman.
Yeah.
And he'll correct me.
Neil Williamson watching.
There you go. He's a rock star. So, but, but there are opportunities within the city, right? There are some city-owned properties. There are, you know, there's discussions of this land bank coming along. And it's just one of the reasons I think the land trust should be considered as, as the steward of that is because of the permanent affordability on that. But clearly on the land trust, we've built the model. We can make it happen. Greg is rocking selling sales. We have a list of more people than product available. And again, we need two things. We need land and we need money, right? So if we can get the land donated, right, or granted in some way, we've, you know, through certain skill sets in my, my background, we've negotiated construction loans. We can go vertical. We have, we have money available for the construction side of it.
Let's throw this to Michael Payne. Okay, Michael Payne, you, I would say, the infographic from the Thomas Jefferson Community Land Trust on screen, you're a favorite to win a spot on council. Okay, we're basing that on what you did in the primary. Seven of nine precincts. That's not political. That's just using empirical data, okay? How do you look at this, should you get a spot on council, then you have influence? Okay, how can we potentially scale this model per se?
I think one opportunity, as was mentioned, is exploring how you can combine a land bank with a land trust, which is something the city has explored a little bit. And as Keith mentioned, other cities are, are starting to do. And we have, you know, typically, that model is, again, as was mentioned, is a city that it's experiencing a lot of foreclosures and tax-delinquent properties. You can have a land bank sweep those properties up and then transfer ownership to a land trust. And you can really start to expand your affordable housing stock that way as an alternative solution to fixing blight.
But that's not necessarily the case here.
No, it's not the case at all here.
Yeah.
We don't have very many foreclosures or tax-delinquent properties, which.
Is a blessing.
But still.
It's a blessing.
Which is, which is a good thing, you know? I've traveled a lot to southwest Virginia and work I've done with Habitat and you see what it looks like when you have a community that's experiencing mass foreclosure still a decade plus after the financial crisis and seeing economic degrowth. And it's, it's not a place you want to be in as a community. But, but even still, I think the land bank opens up opportunities potentially by opening up access to certain financing and funds that can be of use. And I think really expanding community awareness of the land trust model is really big. So people associate the land trust as something they know. It's something that they're familiar with. They see the successes that it's had and they understand how valuable a tool it can be. Because it's new. It's innovative. And a lot of people aren't familiar with it because it's something that's not just in Charlottesville, but nationwide, really just starting to gain traction over the past few years. And I, you know, I hope if we can build momentum and community awareness, people will really start to see it, see it as one of the core pillars of affordable housing locally. And then, you know, as opportunities become available, if they make sense and they're able to have a positive impact on affordability. I mean, you can imagine situations which the city has done frequently in the past and does every budget cycle where you use the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund to provide strategic support where you can make the most impact. And again, because the community land trust model has permanent affordability and is able to have homeownership opportunities, potentially, you know, deeper AMI levels. You know, I think, again, if, if there's opportunities where it's, it's the most strategic investment that can make the biggest long-term impact on affordability, I think it's definitely worth the city.
A lot of potential.
You know, supporting where it makes sense, which again, the city is already doing, you know, has already supported the land trust in the past. It supports other strategic housing opportunities. And I just foresee, you know, as land comes available or you have city-owned land and we're wondering, you know, what can we do with it, where we can really start to move the needle in a big way on that, that gap we currently have in our housing needs assessment.
I've done, I'm gonna throw you for the final word on the land trust, and then we gotta pivot to some other things.
Yeah, sure.
I put the link that you sent me.
Sure.
It's the, it's from the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission. It's the Comprehensive Regional Housing Study and Needs Assessment. I have pinned this link, viewers, on every channel that this show is airing on. Go to the chat box, click the link from the TJ PDC and look and learn. Look and learn. This is one of the keys. What we're trying to do with Real Talk is to make the content approachable and digestible and have you understand what's, what's going on. Your thoughts on this?
Well, I'd like to go back to the land trust a little bit, but to stay on that subject, it's a rather lengthy document, but I would encourage you to look at it. I believe it's the first four pages is an infographic. And shout out to Christine and her team. They really did a wonderful job putting it together. It's very digestible, easy to read. And then if you find a specific topic that you want to dig a little deeper, then go into that 100 and some odd pages report. than go into that hundred and some odd pages, report on it. To go back to the land trust, so, you know, one of the reasons I got excited about getting involved in it was I was able to bring some of my developer builder skill sets to the table and help promote and grow it. So I've always looked at this Nassau project as a development, right? So it's, how do I get somebody to understand what we're doing? And at the end of the day, it's always visual, hands-on, see what it is. So that's the reason why we're building these four units. So just a little shout out if everybody can, can write this down or maybe Jerry can send it out. On July 10th, from 7:30 to 9:30, we're having a hard hat tour of the property. We've invited all the elected officials. Please join us, Michael, if you've got the time. And it, you know, there's nothing like actually putting your hands on a product or a project to understand what you actually can produce because, you know, from a plan, it looks one thing, but to walk through it and get it. So, you know, the, by example, how I think this ball is moving forward and people are understanding, I'll leave the gentleman's name out of it, but I received an email at, believe it or not, 5:30 in the morning from a city staff member saying, don't forget to put your hat in the ring for the money that's coming, that's coming up. So, you know, when you have people like that reaching out to you, you, in my opinion, we're doing something right. And, and having this show and somebody like you, Michael, is helping.
And it's, it's a much smaller piece of the project, but something which I think is also interesting is the fact that they're duplexes and not single-family homes. Again, that's a much smaller part of, of the project, but relates to another big issue in terms of, you know.
More than half the housing stock is single-family detached.
Right.
But we'll take, we'll take single-family detached lots, which.
Yeah.
Which may segue us into one of my other passions, which is, I almost used an acronym, auxiliary dwelling units. ADUs.
Big fan of ADUs. I'm a big fan of ADUs. Auxiliary dwelling units, a cottage in the backyard, a basement that has its own entrance that could be potentially leveraged to help offset overhead for home ownership. For example, the mortgage. ADUs, Michael Payne, jump in here, baby.
Well, again, thinking about meeting our affordable housing need is going to require an all of the above approach. And, and part of that is trying to allow more opportunities for people to build a basement apartment or build a cottage apartment in their backyard, because there's a lot of people who, that is going to help meet their housing needs and do it in a way that's more affordable and increase the supply locally while also still maintaining neighborhood character and not being disruptive. And I think it's a really, in a lot of ways, common sense.
It's a no-brainer.
Solution. And we see a lot of it, you know, like I, myself, I live in what you would call an ADU.
It was a basement?
Auxiliary dwelling unit, basement apartment.
Is it legal?
It's, to my knowledge, yes.
Just, just kidding around.
Well, he would be liable for it.
Just, just joking.
We have every news outlet watching right now, Michael Payne.
Sorry, Michael.
It is, but it's, it's, it's a big part of, of the housing stock and, you know, canvassing and talking with folks. A lot of people who live in those basement apartments and cottage apartments talk about how it was one of the few affordable rentals they found in the city. And so it's how do we open up that opportunity to more people? Potentially find creative ways maybe to tie in, you know, city financing, which can drive certain outcomes or allow it, allow more people to have access to capital in order to build ADUs. So yeah, and, and, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot, that's just very high level, but, you know, I think it's something that we're moving forward with as a city.
Let's thank some of the sponsors. And Jude, the first sizzle reel should be the long one all the way through, all the way through the land trust before Keith started asking about ADUs. I think ADUs is going to be a second sizzle reel where Keith pivoted over there. Neil Williamson has a question for both of you guys. Rachel Burns from RE/MAX watching right now.
Hey, Rachel.
Welcome, Rachel. This portion of the program, thanks to First Heritage Mortgage, Mike Bitrick's team, your choice for a mortgage solution.
He rocked it last Friday, didn't he?
He kicked some, you know what I was gonna say. He crushed it last Friday. Mike Bitrick, a lot of love for you. Let me throw the question to you from Neil, free enterprise forum. Anywhere you guys want to go. Why are duplexes and triplexes prevented in so much of Charlottesville? Is that straight up, Michael, because of the zoning laws? I mean, I'm gonna throw that to you.
Well, it's 100% the zoning laws, which we haven't updated our zoning in any significant way since 2003. And it's important to remember that at that time in the 90s and early 2000s, Charlottesville was experiencing population stagnation, if anything, population decline. And so a lot of our zoning is rooted in a time period where Charlottesville is experiencing degrowth, where it's the complete opposite now. And we just haven't updated our zoning to reflect that reality. There's a lot of history involved in how our zoning got here. Part of it is the history.
White flight.
Wrapped up in, in white flight as well as redlining and racial covenants and the use of R1 zoning to exclude working class, particularly working-class African-American families from living in certain neighborhoods. In more recent history, a lot of it's tied up in, you know, opposition to new development. A lot of it is tied up in political dynamics in terms of, you know, where we've put, allowed, you know, higher density development versus where we haven't. But I think the conversation is starting to shift and people are recognizing that when over 60% of Charlotte, the city of Charlottesville are renters and, but, you know, well over half of our housing stock, all you can build as a developer is a single-family home, that something has to change. And we have to be very strategic and thoughtful about how we change it. But everyone agrees that the status quo is not delivering the outcomes we want to see. And so that, again, it's, it all gets down to the zoning, you know? If you want to build a duplex or a triplex in most of the city, you can't. And a lot of areas where there are currently existing duplexes or triplexes, they're grandfathered in. And if you wanted to build it today, you couldn't. And if you want to try and get a zoning change to allow you to do that, you're gonna have to spend a lot of time.
It's a nightmare.
And you're gonna have complete uncertainty about what the outcome's gonna be. And that makes the incentive to build.
Elsewhere.
Build elsewhere, build a single-family home or just not build residential.
Oliver Cootner, Lynchburg, Keith Woodard, walking away from West Second Street, examples. Keith Smith, thoughts?
Yeah, so this really is this ADU conversation or auxiliary dwelling unit conversation. So I guess it was about this time last year, the city asked me to be part of an ADU cohort put on by Portland State University. And one of the things that Portland is looking at and where they're looking at two things, they've, they are the rock stars as far as ADUs are concerned, but they're also, and it's a lousy acronym and I've been trying to get some of my folks, friends over there to change it, but they call it the RIP, Residential Infill Project. So if.
I'm putting the link in there right now.
Okay, cool.
Look at that.
You're, you're, you know.
Teamwork, baby. Michael Jordan, Scottie Pippen. Michael Jordan, Scottie Pippen, baby.
I was thinking Burton Ernie, but anyway.
Let's call Michael Jordan Scottie.
No, probably Burton.
Okay. We put a link in there for this project, per his suggestion.
Yeah, so this is exactly what Michael was referring to, I think. And if I put words in your mouth, please stop me. So what Portland has done it, they're about ready to approve it. Minneapolis has already approved and then implemented it through, and you'll, if you go through the, the, the summary that you posted, basically you can take a single-family residential, SFD, single-family detached lot, a home, and turn it up into, up to as many as four. There's, you know, all kinds of design requirements and street frontages and corner lots too. But the thing is, is they've adopted, they've amended their, actually their ordinances in those zonings to allow that to happen. And I believe that's what Michael was saying that we needed to change. So this is a great example. It works. The, to go back to the ADU auxiliary dwelling unit question, one of the things that we're working on as a team is to try to educate for the removal, or at least my personal opinion, the removal of the owner occupancy requirement. So in Charlottesville, if you're gonna do an ADU, you have to own and operate, own the parcel and live in, in the unit in order to build that. And Portland removed it, I believe in '09, and they went from like 10 or 20 or 30 ADUs a year to like 600 or 700. And it never happened. And the biggest fear is, will Airbnb come in, right? And, and we don't move the needle forward that Michael and I are talking about, right? Affordable housing, folks to live in. So it never happened and there's, there's data to, to prove that. So to me, I, I think it's a no-brainer. Other jurisdictions, Flavana and Green, I believe, do not have an owner occupancy requirement. I have to double-check that data. Neil will probably correct me if I'm wrong.
Neil's watching right now.
Yeah. So, you know, I was wondering.
Four media outlets watching right now.
Cool. I was wondering what Michael's opinion, and if you're uncomfortable, that's fine, would be removing the owner occupancy requirement.
Yeah. It's something I definitely, you know, would like to see more, more data on, because, you know, I'm familiar with the conversation. I'm not familiar with that, that data for Seattle's experience.
Portland.
Portland's, Portland's experience. So I would definitely be interested in seeing that because, and maybe, you know, maybe my skepticism is wrong, but, you know, I, I've shared that worry of, you know, if you, if we inadvertently create an incentive to have more Airbnbs be part of the housing stock, just because that's gonna remove some of the, the housing stock that could be used for residents and have that be used for part-time tourists coming in.
So you're basically, you guys are basically saying, if we make it easier for ADUs, auxiliary dwelling units, will the homeowners that have the opportunity for these ADUs leverage this opportunity to drive more revenue to their bottom line by Airbnb-ing them at a higher price point or margin than say a 750 a month, monthly rent?
It's a question. It's a question.
I think that undoubtedly will happen.
You know?
So, so I have some ideas on how to make that not happen.
Okay.
And, and of course, these are my ideas only and, and, and one needs to vet this through our silly, I almost said it's silly, but our Dylan rule issues that we have in this, in this state. But what had actually, and Michael, I'm gonna connect you with the folks at Portland State University to get you this data. I was, it's a little early. I was trying to get him to, Robert Liberty to call in and, and provide that specific data for you, but I will make that connection for you. But, you know, just to do an example, we spent a good portion of the show talking about the land trust, right? We couldn't do this. The land trust couldn't come in, buy, grant it a lot in Belmont, build a unit, build an ADU because we would not be the, you know, owner occupied. And so therefore we've removed, potentially two, or if we end up approving some sort of residential infill project, four or whatever numbers. So it precludes Habitat. It precludes the land trust to do that. So if it's possible, one of the proposals that I was throwing out internally amongst our group was, well, what if we just make it, if you're a nonprofit in the housing market, that you can do this?
Oh, you're saying only nonprofits can do it then?
I don't know if that's even legal. I don't know if that's possible. I'm sure at some level, and Neil will probably say, correct me, but it may cross some.
Well, let me play devil's advocate with you for the sake of a talk show, and I'm gonna throw it to both you guys. Is the only fatal flaw of making ADUs more ubiquitous, the fact that the folks that own the auxiliary dwelling units could use these for Airbnbs as opposed to making them affordable rentals for people who cannot, who want to live in the city? Is that the only fatal flaw? Because I'm gonna throw this to you guys, because if there are Airbnbs, theoretically, the revenue from the Airbnbs are going to the municipality for the municipality to use however the city of Charlottesville would like to use it. So that is a positive.
Do you mind if I jump in on that?
Sure, yeah.
So, so it's a concern of Michael's, right? So Michael, most likely is gonna be sitting at the city council. So from this side of the table, I have to help educate Michael, give him the resources so that he can make a better decision. I personally don't think that that's what's gonna happen with the, with the Airbnbs. It didn't happen in, in Portland, frankly. It's gonna happen anyway, right? So if I own a piece.
It's happening anyway, you're saying?
That's exactly right. If I own a piece of property in, in Belmont and I want to build an ADU, there is a path by which I can do that and I can make it an Airbnb.
Richard Fox, who's watching right now, the owner of Roslin Farm, has done 3,000 Airbnbs. He put on the stream here, 3,000 Airbnbs. Richard, I'm curious of your take on this. Michael Payne, I'm very curious of your take on this.
Well, again, you know, it's, it's a concern I have and it's a factor, you know, to evaluate and everything. But like I said, you know, it's something, you know, to me, it's still an open question that, you know, I'm just interested in seeing more data and research on.
And it's my role to provide that.
And, and I don't think, you know, any analysis is, you know, the cost benefit of, of, you know, potential increase to Airbnb. So it's, it's just a factor that I evaluate into, into it, but it's not something that I think necessarily should, you know, torpedo the idea or anything like that. And I'm just looking at the, the housing stock held for occasional use data. And you see Charlottesville are on 1%, Almorel 2%, Louisa 13%, Nelson 27%. And to me, again, that just raises questions, not certainties, but questions as to what's driving some of those dynamics and what would, what could potentially increase that percentage in Charlottesville. It's sort of a little different than that, but I think Charlottesville with Airbnbs currently, a big part of it is the issue of enforcement as well.
Right.
Because.
The tax revenue.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of Airbnbs in Charlottesville that you're not seeing tax revenue generated from or you're not seeing it being done totally above board because people are just doing it. And it's, and there's not enforcement on the part of the city in trying to enforce any owner occupant requirements, which is another factor in all of this. And I know the city has recently had some discussions about things they could maybe do to try to ensure they're getting all the tax revenue they're owed from existing Airbnbs that maybe aren't being reported properly, which gets, you know, a sort of separate issue, but a larger issue of enforcement and, you know.
I can offer some background on that.
You can have all your zoning in the world, but.
So.
We got a comment. We got a comment here from Richard Fox.
Okay.
3,000 Airbnbs.
Okay.
He did last year. Richard Fox, who's got, and Richard, correct me if I'm wrong, is it between 60 to 100 acres you own right in Almorel County, Roslin Farm, very close to Almorel High School. Correct me if I'm wrong here. He says, because of our revenue from Airbnbs, we were able to qualify for a mortgage we otherwise would not have been able to qualify for. The result was opening up 60 acres in the urban ring to the public. Airbnb made our housing affordable at Roslin Farm. Thank you, Richard Fox, for that. Terry Kent from the Seabell Climate Collaborative, thank you for joining us. Richard Fox also adds, there's a balance of people using it to enable the purchase of a property they wouldn't be able to afford otherwise. And those who are doing it purely as an investment. So he's saying that there's two different types. Kelly Die, Vice President of Banking at First Citizens Bank is watching right now. Coy Barefoot watching right now. A lot of movers and shakers watching the program now. Keith Smith.
Well, I should, and sorry, but I was just, you know, briefly, I think, you know, but it's important to be clear that the Airbnb is a factor, but I think regardless of that, there's a consensus that we have to move towards reforming our ADU process. And the question is just how can we do that in the most thoughtful, impactful way? And, and I don't think we can allow that to torpedo the conversation of moving.
It's a good conversation.
And it isn't amongst the, the team that's working on it. I can assure you, the Airbnb is not torpedoing it. We are addressing the issues that, you know, we have folks from Seattle DC, all up the west coast, talking about it. I just want to add one little comment about that because, and I'm gonna pivot back to owner occupancy. So Robert Liberty, who's running this program at Portland State University, we were having a martini and.
I like martinis.
We were having a martini, sitting here in Orzo, and, you know, and I said, look, I think the biggest struggle is gonna be the owner occupancy. How can I help Michael understand that that's not going to be, it just didn't materialate, other, materialize, excuse me, other than the data? He goes, look, Keith, what other housing structure has this? And I looked at him and I go, I don't quite understand what you mean.
I don't understand that neither.
Yeah. Well, exactly what I said. So apparently I need a second martini so I can understand this. He says, look, you know, I can go buy a house or a duplex and rent them out. So why can't I do that with an ADU? So what he was trying to say is, is this seems to be the only restriction on ownership.
It's because of the taxable revenue, though.
No, it's taxed. It's taxed.
Or, okay, and how about this then?
So you might.
Is it because the hotels are being cannibalized?
So you're, you're, you keep on going back to Airbnb.
Okay.
I'm looking at straight, straight up auxiliary dwelling units.
To renters.
It's to renters to help solve. It's to renters, to help solve or create this healthy housing system. So the, an ADU is a, a legal ADU is a separate addressed structure. It pays taxes just like the primary structure. So the city or the county is receiving revenue, right? But what he's trying to tell me is, is eight, this restriction of owner occupancy is the only one in a housing structure. So I can go buy an apartment complex and rent it out. I can go buy a duplex and rent it out. I can go buy a single-family detached home and rent it out. But if I put an ADU to, and any one of those, I can't. And so, and, and maybe it was the second martini, but it started to make sense when he was trying to say, well, you know, okay, so tell me why that's not allowed. Why don't you say that in a single-family detached house, right? I'm going to go buy a house in Belmont for rental property, and you say, you can't do that unless you live in it. We don't do that with any other housing stock.
What do you think, Michael Payne?
Does that make sense, Michael?
Um, I think it makes sense. I mean, you know, again, you know, I'm, you know, I'm definitely looking forward to seeing, seeing the data and, and the research from, you know, what's been happening in Portland and seeing, you know, what their experience has been and what they found. I think certainly the point about, thinking about more like institutional nonprofit developers in terms of the impact of owner occupancy requirements on how they operate is, is definitely important and considering it in terms of maybe zooming out the focus a little bit from just, you know, someone, individual who may happen to own a home and thinking about, you know, what are, what are developers who are operating multiple properties and trying to add how, you know, a more substantial housing stock to the city, you know? How does that owner occupancy requirement impact their ability to create rental units, basically?
So we're basically at a crossroads with ADUs. We have this crossroads. We have the crossroads of auxiliary dwelling units with the homeowner that needs the ADU to help supplement the overhead to their property. The ADU can help them afford their home more. Then the other crossroads, the dichotomy is, the ADU with the guy or the gal that has deep pockets that wants the ADU to drive more revenue to the bottom line.
So, so this one is here now?
Yeah, definitely.
This exists.
Right.
Right?
This one right here.
Does not.
Right.
We don't know if that's going to happen or not, and that's.
What this is about.
I think that's what this dialogue's about.
100%.
Yeah, so one of the other things that one of our team members was suggesting, which I thought was actually not a bad idea, so that if, if I am receiving city money or grant money or some sort of tax abatement to put an ADU in, then it comes with a requirement that it must be for an affordable housing unit for X number of years. I think that is a, probably the low-hanging fruit and a path that may be rece- achievable, that you would say, okay, you know, if we are going, and I just don't, if this won't make the owner occupancy question go away, but it would motivate people to create, in my opinion, to create affordable housing instead of Airbnb, right? Not that, and again, Airbnb serves their purposes, and I didn't really want to make the conversation necessarily about that, but I necessarily wanted to see what can we do to help move along this affordable housing or healthy housing discussion. So, you know.
This has been great.
Thank you. I would, I mean, I'll feed whatever information I can to you, Michael. We'll connect via email, and I, I'm just really passionate about this, and I believe that there's a solution here, if we can get everybody at the table and, and actually have a conversation.
We got, uh, we're an hour in. I'm going to fire everything to you.
Oh, sorry.
No, this is great. This is, I love this stuff. I freaking love the real estate.
I know that you say that every week.
I love, I love, love.
You should get your real estate license.
I love, love. My wife would kill me. We're too busy right now. Let me throw this to you.
Yona does a really good class of teaching.
Let me throw this to you guys here. We've got some comments coming in. Let's go kind of rapid-fire on this.
Sure.
Richard Fox of Roslin Farms, who's in the county, big-time parcel of land in the county. He says, maybe Almaral County could take part of the 5% transient occupancy tax and throw it towards affordable housing to balance what some feel Airbnb takes away from that market. They aren't even sending it to the tourism fund currently, even though that's where it's supposed to be going. So why can't they send 2% towards affordable housing? That's a good point from Richard. I think very reasonable. We have a question for both you gentlemen. This question's from Mary Frances Wyland. Michael and Keith, what about building, quote, tiny house senior housing communities with some of that affordable land from the land trust? Tiny house senior housing communities. And that's a good point. Oftentimes, the retired senior is being overlooked and marginalized here.
So I, I can't give too many specifics of it because we're in a series of negotiations, but the land trust is a regional, we're, we're, I almost used the word MSA, but we're six jurisdictions, Charlottesville, Albemarle, Fullavanna, Nelson, Green, Louisa. So we're looking at a project in Fullavanna County where, where we could do exactly that. Keep it age-restrictive, keep it affordable. I can't specifically get into details, but we are looking at that as, as options.
Michael Payne.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's something that makes sense. I mean, I know there's a Habitat affiliate, forgetting which county, it's, it might be Nelson or Green that did a tiny home. They did their first tiny home for an elderly partner family who's living alone, and that was the housing type that best met their need. And I think, you know, it's, it's something that I think has a lot of utility in meeting that housing need, especially if you can think about how you can have, you know, a community where people are able to live in place and have resources there, which I think ties in as well to, you know, some of the conversation about ADUs, is we have to get to a place where in our zoning and our planning, we're allowing for more creative housing types that match the diversity of the needs there are in housing in terms of moving away from where the dominant thing that's only incentivized to be built is, again, you know, a larger, single-family home. And how are we going to get to smaller apartments, smaller homes, perhaps more use of manufactured homes and looking at that technology and how that can be utilized and to allow for even deeper affordability, and recognizing that a lot of our planning practices are a huge barrier for us to getting to that place.
So, Michael, these are exactly the subjects we've been looking at for a year now. Actually, I think we have a scheduled visit to Portland for our one-year wrap-up or one-year.
Michael, you should go. Just don't use the city credit card when you go on that trip right there. Sorry, that's a joke.
Is my wife watching?
Uh, your wife is not watching.
So I can invite you.
Yeah.
If she was watching, I couldn't do that. So I, I think it's going to be, I think, a week after the election, but I would encourage you to reach out. We'll, we meet regularly. We'll invite you or whoever, what other candidates are willing to, to sit down and do it. One of the things, make a bit of a plug for my regional housing partnership that I, that I chair, we are open to the public. We are a public body. I'd love you to come. You can get on the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission's website. There's where the schedules are and all this stuff. Anybody is welcome to attend. When I have the public comment portion of it, it's, I'd love to see people in the room that, and get up and speak. We have all the four pillars there. We have folks from UVA, local government, nonprofits, and the for-profits. So I would encourage you to, to attend, or anybody to attend.
Yeah, you're good about that. You hop around everywhere.
Well, yeah.
Saw you last night.
Definitely, yeah.
At the Paramount. This guy's a man about town.
So let's talk about last night. What, what happened? Did you win something?
I was the Charlottesville, I was the Better Business Awards. Terry Kent, who's watching right now, Charlottesville Climate Collaborative, the influence, the impetus, the inspiration, the foundation of the Better Business Awards. I was one of the presenters, did a little speech, was absolutely fantastic at the Paramount. I wore shoes.
I saw that.
I wore sho- I wore a suit. Michael Payne, if I'm wearing shoes, that's a big, big deal, okay? This guy's good people. He's, he gives us his time. I really appreciate that. I've enjoyed getting to know you on this program and on this set. I think this is one of the best shows we've ever done, certainly very affordable and very informative. We've had three media outlets currently watching right now, Charlottesville tomorrow, NBC29, and The Daily Progress are all tuning in. May or may not have to do something with this amigo right here, this guy.
Totally not me.
Who's on set. Come on now. You're chairman of some.
It could be the socks, though.
You're a chairman of some, dude, we have to get the socks.
You have, I'm very disappointed you have not.
The sock cam.
The sock cam has been left. I'm, I'm, I'm going to have to relook at my contract.
Yeah, look at this. He's looking, he's looking really closely. Get the socks out. We got the sock cam. Michael Payne, you got some cool socks on today?
Nothing worth showing off.
We need to get your ankles in the mix over here. The sock cam right there. This, this show powered by the YES team, it will be archived in totality on iloveSeville.com. We encourage you to check the link that's been pinned in all the chat boxes, and the link is the Comprehensive Regional Housing Study and Needs Assessment, courtesy of the Central Virginia Regional Housing Partnership and Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission.
Michael, thank you for your time.
Yeah, dude.
I, I, I hope we were as laid-back and as possible, and we didn't want to put you on the spot or anything like that.
No, yeah, I enjoyed being here, enjoyed the conversation, and I think, you know, I think we're moving into a really exciting area as a city with, and like was mentioned, I would really encourage everyone, if you haven't, to check out the, the work that the Regional Housing Partnership has done and the report they put out. At least at a minimum, read the summary. The data is pretty stark, and I think it makes it pretty clear that there's no way forward except for us to think and plan regionally.
I love it. Good, good ending point. Good work, gentlemen. Show in totality on iloveSeville.com. Watch it start to finish. This show, very, 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 very informative. Friday's at 10:15 on the IloveSeville Network. It's Real Talk, powered by the YES team, powered by Charlottesville Settlement Company, First Heritage Mortgage, Royal Wheeler.
The hair smith in company.
We didn't talk about hair today. Hair, I mean, your hair's always flawless. Come on. We will see you guys next Friday at 10:15.
Thank you, everybody.
Good work.
Thanks, man.
Good work. Michael Payne.
Thank you.
Good work. Good work. We'll get some photos. That was solid.
Yeah, definitely.
Informative. Informative, informative. A lot of folks watching right there.
Well, that was all about Michael. It wasn't about me.
I think it was the.